Welcome to the study session November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Donna, we do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns here. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp is absent this evening. And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about the Transportation Benefit District, commonly known as the T B D.
I'm actually going to start us out, Mayor. We're going to kind of tag team this. We might even have Armstrong to dive in, if you don't mind. So we can make sure to cover all our bases. At first, almost, there's quite a bit of info here. We have more than we didn't include. There's a list of projects in your packet that isn't in the presentation spreadsheet. That's what I think it's feet of chipseal or paving. And then Mary Ritter put a presentation together. Todd Rhodes and all the public crews in Public Works, the Street Department, they helped us out and gave this information together for you as well. We'll admittedly say we didn't track it very well the first few years of the T B D formulation. So getting all this information together for this purpose is really invaluable. Not only for this purpose, but also for your statutes as well. We'll start out, the T B D or Transportation Benefit District. It's a quasi municipal taxing jurisdiction. It's authorized under state law, much like the S N P D that the City Council serves as the governing board for Transportation Benefit District. We can authorize these for two ten-year terms. These raise revenue for specific purposes, which are transportation verses, so that's roads and sidewalks. So pedestrian and bike transportation at the same time. And there's two funding, two opportunities to fund the T B D, which is a sales tax, which is the place now. City Sheldon, or a vehicle license fee. So car tab fee is what is most common referred to. And so they're held in separate account. Our finance partners create a job, receive those funds specifically. Statements are clear through sales tax. They're held in a reserve account and authorized specifically through project authorization. Back in two thousand and sixteen, and it was actually the city commission that on the T B D. It's two tenths of a percent on taxable goods and services for up to ten years. Before transportation projects within city limits. Again, ten years, so it expires in two thousand and twenty-six. It can be extended once under state law this month. So that's really the tenor of the conversation today. It's the council. Big segment. So by ordinance eighteen sixty-nine, vote agree one five. The commission at that point recognized a gap in funding for our transportation projects. And maintenance of our transportation system and brought this forward to its entire issue for approval and community. Again, council serves as the governing board. So we prioritize projects to city six-year transportation improvement program. And see that brought forward to you on a regular basis. And we utilize studies and information on some pavement condition index facilities. Two weeks ago? Does that sound right? Two weeks ago? And the forthcoming ADA transition plan to further demonstrate to these needs for transportation budget. So we base that on the information that we have available to us. Which includes improving protecting long-term investments, right? Our transportation system is one of our biggest assets within our community. And certainly serves to provide not only commerce. Supporting themselves around the city for commerce, but also pedestrian bicycle traffic registration purposes and just general activity. We were in fear of reducing our maintenance to the point that we would have failures within our transportation system. Safety, we'll see some of the projects like Safe House Schools with this fund that's supported in recent past. As well as you're avoiding some of the most expensive replacement projects by performing maintenance. This fund supplies critical funding for like our chipseal programs, overlays, crack sealing, things like that. Hopefully, you're reducing some congestion as well at the same time by having some capacity projects attached to funding for Transportation Benefit. As we saw in the pavement condition index presentation a couple of weeks ago. Our infrastructure, particularly our roads, they age very quickly if they're not maintained appropriately. And then they become much more expensive to maintain in place. So some of the capital projects, this is where I think Jay probably jumped on the bottom more specifically about. You'll see that there's been funded only fifty-three thousand, maybe two miles of pavement chipsealing since two thousand and sixteen. That has all really maintained our places.
Sure, yeah. So I was involved with the Western Gateway project. That road was pretty shattered. That was on this side of town here. Anyways, a great pedestrian connection, safer for people to walk along the road. I got the bus turnout, I put in all with circuit court also. Safe Road School, another big success on that project. That was just recently completed. They got a lot of work done. Both of those projects, we leveraged grant money from the state. For both of those. So we used the Transportation Benefit District funds and went and took, you know, ten, twenty percent off the dollar. And levered state funds for both of those projects. Pioneer Way, Lake Boulevard, I had some pictures and some other presentations, but I didn't know how bad Lake Boulevard was in two thousand and sixteen. I wasn't here at that time, but the before pictures were pretty, pretty bad off. And that project turned out really, really good. That's the type of road, though, that's been ten years, right? We need to walk, we keep waiting for roads like that. You remember from a few weeks ago, about year twelve, year fourteen, is where we really need to be looking. You had to keep up on crack sealing, but there might be another surface treatment coming down the road by a chipseal or that sort of thing. That was a full paving project. That was full in-depth reclamation. That's, they waited way too long to go and do anything on that road. And then Turner Avenue, same sort of thing, a really expensive project, a road that was really, really bad off at that point. Next slide.
Well, also, one of the first few projects that were done was that gravel road on Jefferson Street between, I believe, A and B. And that neighborhood was extremely happy that that was paved. Because there was a lot of dust and kids couldn't even play in the front yard. They would let us know coming from the meetings.
Yeah, in two thousand and sixteen, there was just about ten thousand people being paid. Those, that was the beginning of our efforts for the initial budget from T B D.
So T B D does other things, other than building the roads. So we do chip sealing, which is more of a maintenance activity. So we've done three miles. That's a lot of roadway. We got some coming up in two thousand and twenty-five also. Potholes, that's just regular stuff we do all winter long. Water gets in to a pocket, the cars when they travel over, rolled out the asphalt. And eventually it's down to gravel and they can get deep. And then we go in with our new patch truck called Patch Squad is what that is. Thanks for coming to us. Thank you, Mary. I'm going to give the label on it. But we go out and we try to take care of those before they get too big. That's where the T B D can help us using MyCivit, right? Take the picture, get into this, and we'll get on it. Because we can't, we're not driving around hitting all the roads all the time. So get us those pictures that can see stuff like that. roadside mowing, that makes a lot of sense. When you fall to an intersection, you have to be able to see. The tall grass causes problems. Also, it growing along the road, we want to keep it cut down because we don't want brush. And eventually trees be growing right along the roadside. So there's a reason on the busier roads, we keep it all knocked down. Snow and ice removal, we're not quite there yet. We just got sand delivered a few days ago. But it's likely coming, right? So T B D helps for a piece of that. Streets sweeping, under our new stormwater permits required. Pretty much getting all the busier streets every couple of weeks, those are the collectors. And on the local streets, every couple of months is what we're doing during the season though. We're out, you know, this time of year, you're going to see us a lot more, but then we back off and then jump back over to patching potholes again. So and then we grade gravel roads, alleys, and parking strips. As you go downtown here, there's quite a few gravel alleys. Up on Capitol Hill, those are quite a few gravel streets. Those require quite a bit of work, especially during the rainy season. And then when the water freezes in the potholes, it heaves it. And so we got, you can't grade the gravel except for on dry days. That's a little bit of a problem around there because it rains a lot, right? But we get out on these gravel roads and we have the massive scraper, you know, to take care of it and to get those graded. Next slide, please. So funding, you want to go with funding?
Sure. We'll go with funding. And so in twenty-three, the district collected just over seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars for that two-tenths percent. And of that seven hundred and thirty, two hundred and seven spent on maintenance and five hundred and ninety-one on structural projects. Our total street department budget in twenty-three was just about two million dollars. See, see that there, that that's T B D, there's a general fund allocation to the street fund to make it whole. And perform all of the things that are down there, just since it's established from about five million dollars collected. Sixteen. T B D. So as Jay mentioned, the next slide will talk about how we leverage funds for grants. Turner Avenue paving, so the city map is just ten percent. So like he said, we're getting, you know, dollar, great, ten dollars spent for these projects, essentially ten percent. So down south, the project, again, ten percent of rebuilding the project, ten percent investment from the city to get that worked down. So we've been quite successful with previous staff and existing staff, even more successful getting some of these transferred to our transportation projects. We talked about Safe Roads Schools and projects that aren't, that aren't all on here right now. We just finished the Safe Routes downtown. And it's a downtown connector. It's on the Safe Routes. I got it. Sheldon High School. Some of the projects yet even made them.
Off the top of my head, except for the upcoming project.
In limited.
Yeah, and that, that was, that's a huge project with the sidewalks and the ADA and the driveways and the pavement. A lot of work on that road. It's a long length too, right? It's not a small project. We'll hopefully be under design here in the coming month. Up, we'll be bringing you guys a signed contract a couple of months and get that underway. With a goal of being a bid this time next year on that roadway, pretty much. Hopefully, we can stay out of full depth reclamation, but the asphalt's going to have to be ground out for sure. Hopefully, the base rock, we need to geotech involved, but the base rock is still complimenting under there.
You definitely got away to Newland Wallace or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Intersection, just an ADA, that's everything put in. It's a large one, but we're forty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think safe to say that, you know, certainly the volume of projects occur without the T B D. Particularly the funds that we need to match some of the grants that are available to us. And there's transportation grants out there. It's, they're becoming, they're very competitive. For some folks, we have to, we have to be on target to complete manage our projects in a reasonable timeframe. It's basically to you finding support that we have the staff available all the time, available resources. Should these projects get done in their time of matter. Also, you lose your buying capacity, right? These projects extend now. So want to make sure we're staying on. Touch a little bit on the street fund. Obviously, it's making some operations of our streets and transferations and stuff. We talked about the T B D supplement that means. There was some of the twenty twenty-three capital projects with speed lines. So that local safety projects do crosswalk side of the projects. Everybody that we just mentioned, the T B D funding for the project. Obviously, the question we made there, we had the same nice intersection of grades as well. Front Street paving. But we heard a lot of white fleets. We drove on Front Street on a regular basis after that was paved. And that was done much like Capitol Hill project this year with the correlation of basic county, which is also a great partnership that we have. This helps save. We release money as well as extend some of our T B D funds by adding that partnership.
Probably better than faster.
Yeah. And then walk scale overlay. So specifically to the sales tax or the license tab fees. It was determined that the initial imitation in T B D sales tax is more equitable. This is your city community, you're paying it. It's not just those nice things, which in City Sheldon, they pay the license tab fees. It's being spread out. Obviously, dedicating funding is something you rely upon through the lifetime of the T B D. Our sales tax is pretty consistent, as the director Giedens talked about. It doesn't fluctuate very much from year to year. It's pretty consistent. So we can depend on that revenue source with some certainty. And then obviously, there's a balance between maintenance and capital projects. The T B D offers the city some flexibility to not only maintain issues, but build that capacity of capital projects that much needed. So next steps, as I kind of let off earlier, this, the T B D, we're, you know, what are the? Fifteen months away or so from the expiration of the two thousand and sixteen T B D. But for a measure like this, we really have to plan ahead. We worked backwards from when the T B D expires to a reasonable timeline that we would have to. Make a couple of decisions, I guess, by the council to bring this to a valid measure again. So again, expires in the March, early April in two thousand and sixteen, or two thousand and twenty-six, that's ten years. So working backwards by July fifteenth, we have, the council could have to approve the resolution. It's not a ballot by, this is for April, February ballot date. By August fifth, it's the last day to file with Mays County Parkers Office for controlling how it entered that by July fifteenth. It was the last meeting for that August fifth deadline. We know where November fifth general election would allow the certification of the election in time. To notify D O R for collection in April when the existing T B D expires. So you don't see a gap in funding. You certainly could do it earlier in the year and give yourself the opportunity to put back on the ballot again and reinforce the public. If it isn't successful, but at this point, these are kind of, I guess, the worst case scenario. But to, in order to maintain the funding consistency, this is the timeline that's in front of you today. Certainly can adjust that time, the council so chooses. You think this, Jay?
No, I just print this out. If you go to the M R S C website, I don't know if you've been there before. But this is a list of the city Transportation Benefit Districts just around Washington State. And it's a pretty extensive list. This is really small, but I'll hand it around if you want to look. And it shows out the sales tax percentages, or if they're doing a vehicle licensing fee. Or I'm looking at the bowl. There's someone there that had a bulk and see that's either one of the other.
Uh, there's.
Yeah, there's a couple of, yeah. So anyways, I can hand this around so you can sort of see the others.
If you read the small print.
Isn't, isn't there an option to, to up that to three tenths of a percent?
Stretched totally. Yeah.
Three, three tenths of the max.
Port Angeles, or Port Angeles is at three tenths. There's a. Say, say, it's the intention of probably the most, just given the history of your view, is the most common. And certainly the sales tax is more common. I will, I don't want to sound like a real director, but obviously, we're proposing that twenty twenty-five budget. That utilizes about a million dollars in reserve. We just talked about how much the T B D benefits the street fund. So certainly, if those funds were not, were not extended, T B D was not, was not extended. There's certain decisions made by council at that point, what service of the street fund. It means certainly capital projects being.
Yeah, I think you already mentioned it tonight, and I think I've asked you in the past. Of all the projects we've done, Gateway, Jefferson, and Olympic Highway and Alder, and none of that would have been done without the T B D. Probably none.
Yeah, you know, Western Gateway, there's certainly the utility portion, water, stormwater, those portions that are. But certainly, without those, without those T B D funds, it's very difficult to grant those projects to the real issue. But with the breadth of that project, you know, with sidewalks, there's full payment, full debt payment. Almost, almost those portions of the street that really, really are open by its, by its premises.
Questions or comments?
I just wanted to reiterate in the past of my gratitude for the road improvements that I've seen in this town in the past ten years. And I'd like to make sure that we keep raising our index to the next level. And that we leave in ten years, hopefully, a better road system than what we've had. And I would like to think about not only maintaining the two percent that we've thought about. But maybe think about going to that point three percent. That would only increase our taxes by point one percent. Even just renewing this doesn't increase our taxes. It just keeps at the same level. Am I correct? So, so even if, I'd like to think big and hope that we can raise our, you know, raise our standards a little higher. And I would hope that we could try to look at a point three percent increase, a maximum increase that we can. And I'd like to make sure that our roads are safe and that we continue to do free commerce on public roads for everybody. And that, I think, if we really want to create a system where we have a working free market, we need to have roads. So this is the most important thing we can do to that end economically. And I think this is a point one percent investment if we increase, and I think we're just playing even if we renew it. And I'd like to not even entertain not trying to put this on the ballot. Make sure, I think this is a necessity that we're going to be a grower and a player in the future. So that's how I feel.
Do we have info? Can we get info on, I know some of these places had the vehicle, whatever the tab fee. And then ended up going to the sales tax. But any stats or numbers on examples of places where that happened on the difference of money brought in from it? For example, with the, so, you know, they did the tab fee first. How much money, how much revenue did that bring in versus the sales tax they then went to, to compare the two? I would be kind of curious if those numbers.
I think I remember that the beginning that it was going to be quite a bit less.
I would think so, but I just.
The most common tab fee for T B D is about ten dollars. So we'd be probably looking at about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue on a tab fee.
I figured. Right, yeah.
Could be, could be more or less, but probably not more than two hundred thousand. And we're getting seven hundred thousand for tax.
I'm not sure if we analyzed that. Certain beginning.
Car tab versus sales tax.
Yeah, when you was on the. But, but I don't know if we analyzed the difference in revenue between the two, between the two. But we can certainly see if.
I mean, that makes sense. You've got more knowledge on that than I do. I just, I figured it was going to be a very substantial difference, but I just didn't know how.
No, it'd be great to see actual numbers. I'm sorry, I just.
I'm seeing for this list, twenty dollars of the vehicle license fee.
Right.
Quite often, looks like there's a couple of forty dollars in there.
It's a lot higher than that.
To noise, you know, but it looks like twenty is most part of the common.
That one hurts all at once, though. I know every time I have to re-up.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's like, and I have like five vehicles. Right.
We'll see if we can find this, if we can find a specifically the information on, on licensed vehicles and speed, if that is readily available.
Yeah, just curiosity, because I have the same question, you know.
I'm confident that you. George, data request to deal. Hold on, one on. George?
I like what both of them have been saying about finding out about the car tabs versus the sales tax and all. But I'm always in favor of putting something on the ballot. So if that's what we need to do, and it's time, so the essence, and we need to do it sooner than later, we should definitely get on it. So I think if we're at two percent and making the improvements we are, sounds good to me. If we can just photocopy what we did before and move it forward and get it going, you know. Yeah, I feel, you know, because I'd like to see, you know, who knows what the price is going to be next year? Who knows what's going to happen within the next six months? Taxes and fees change pretty quickly, but something like this. I know most government grants like to not be the first dollar ants. So we need to have something to bring to the table. And by having the T B D and letting people know that this is how your roads get funded, I'm pretty sure we can get a lot of people to go along.
Most grants are.
Yeah, no, as I said.
I will say, part, part of the. Part of the timeline is also, you have to build in a communication strategy, right? We have to demonstrate to the public how these structures, much like we're doing tonight. We cannot, we say we cannot promote the ballot measure. We can provide information once it's put out there. So but we need to provide that information. We need to demonstrate these projects are happening all over town. Most people just say, oh, it's new asphalt, right? They don't really know how it got there and why it got there. And then everybody has a wall, putting answers to this community to make sure that these improvements are being made.
That's something that's often.
Absolutely.
Media and that sort of thing that we.
Yeah, and certainly there's individuals who may need to be, they can protect ballot measures. I don't know different candidates, but that's just separate from any time or resources.
I, I know that it costs about twenty grand to put this up on the ballot. I would probably suggest doing this earlier. And if it fails, then doing it again in November. I'd rather do it in August and in November. If we, if we have the choice, just because we don't get the message out. We, we know what we need to do in November to get it out to do better. Does that make sense? I, I think we should do it earlier, and if it did fail, then we get back to the drawing board and find a better way to get out there to the public and get it passed. Because obvious, I mean, keep saying it again and again and again, we could have done half of this stuff, or any of the stuff that we've done without this T B D. And, you know, and everybody who shops in. without this TBD and you know, and everybody who shops in in Shelton is paying for the roads. The county people who live out in Lake Limerick are driving on our roads. This is the way that would that they're they're pitching in. It's by just two tenths of one percent, twenty cents for a thousand dollars.
Not reason anything.
I think most people. We did it wrong last time. Twenty dollars. But there we go. So I mean.
In terms of the uh county, um, when you're in the general question, that cost is shared by others, including perhaps council seats and that sort of thing. And so the cost for us, which should be lower and no bigger than it would be in August. Because it'd be the only subject that we'd be putting out. We might be the only one on the ballot too.
Yeah.
Which we would have to carry the whole cost.
This would be a primary in August.
We're not going to have twenty people in a city council.
There'll be a primary in August this year, so.
Is there a primary? Okay, so that would be helpful.
Then we're paid for that already, right?
We will pay for, yeah.
Yeah.
Proportionally what's on the ballot.
Yeah, because we're already paying for, so I don't know if we pay more for each each.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, it's proportionate, right? How many, how many measures or how many candidates might have.
Okay.
The the one concern about running in August, obviously you have to have a resolution date um by the council in July and then to the county by August fifth, which I forget what we actually did. I'm not sure looking at the calendar. So it starts bumping up the 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 requirements to get it on the ballot for off for November bump up against uh, you know, August selection day. So we just have to consider what that means. Um, my intent and um and I would do everything I could to make sure that our community is fully informed on one ballot measure, that we don't make those mistakes that we are putting our effort in to inform everybody the first time. Now.
It's still hard to do because because the city can't.
Yep, it takes work, but we've been informed. Um, I would hope that there's there's proponents out there somewhere that may obviously over mountains at the same time, but if we're factual, we provide the information necessary for people to make a decision. Um, I think that it's in our streets, if you will, right now, right?
How many times did it take to pass last time?
Once, and it was big, sixty fifty percent.
So. The odds are in the world or something.
The citizens in in Shelton are very good to to us. I mean, to the fire departments and TBD and parks, so people want a good community, so.
People need to remember when we're talking about roads, it's not just roads, it's also sidewalk. And I don't know anybody who's never left their house. Right? So we're all walking or riding or, you know, we're all, we all have places to go.
Lights too, right? Lights, roundabouts, the works, yeah.
You can't get traffic signals.
I mean, I know somebody that we can lobby to help us uh get the word out. Might even be sitting back there. I said, I know somebody might help get the word out. He's actually sitting back there.
I have two questions. Um, so the first one is, can we talking about the point three percent? Is that something we can run off cycle? Because I would not want to risk that point two percent to try to gain.
Right.
Point one.
Yeah.
Because we really.
I had that thought too. Because if they're like, ooh, that's a little higher than I want and we lose the whole thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'd be happy to wager putting it on a year later or two years later if that was feasible.
Yeah.
Okay, you, can you do that?
They add.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I believe you can have another measure to add to. Yes.
So if you have a longer project, yeah.
Extend the time, ten, but remember it does not extend in time.
Okay.
But you can go up with the non.
I let me confirm that, but I read that MR six.
That makes sense.
I'd definitely rather give up the point one percent to try to keep what we can. Um, but I'd be interested to see what the voters would have to say about what we could make better. Um, and my other question is a little bit uh, jumping ahead, which is have we seen any legislation or have we seen any lobbying around giving us a third shot at this or the ability to make it permanent? Because it does seem like we're going into our tenure period where we'll we'll hopefully have this. But looking ahead, do we? Is there any movement on that?
And it's been one of A W C's legislative priorities in the past. I don't know. It's again, it's a list of priorities of for housing, uh, homeless response, uh, as well treatment. So it's just kind of that, it's kind of that. Um, certainly we can work with our delegation um to potentially uh move that initiative forward. But yes, I think it certainly will be, particularly with the number of cities that uh, looking through through the list here, how many have um eventually won their TVD before the city of Sheldon. It's 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 rare that there's one sixteen, seventeen or eighteen, so.
It was, it was pretty high on the A W C priority list the first couple of years, but then it last, I don't believe it was on there at all last year.
No, yeah.
So we need to definitely talk to Troy and get a delegation on.
Agreed, though, it needs to be on there because it it's it's local funding, right? It's it's something that hopefully our 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 representatives in in Columbia would allow local jurisdictions to make that, I think, station, say, to make that decision.
Like, we're so limited as a smaller city in the funding choices we have available to us, you know? The bigger your jurisdiction, the more ability you have to have a stadium district or all these public facilities districts where you can pull all sorts of different taxing options. And we just don't have that available to us. So it'd be really bad if we were to lose this option. So hoping we can keep that on our radar and hopefully the uh the voters will keep us in our TBD fees for the next ten years.
Cool. I think what's what's really important a lot of times is um, like, I will ask, what happens if we don't, right? And sometime showing what happens when you take something away um is really helpful. You know, it's like, yes, we have these things. We start to take them for granted. What does it look like when we don't have these things anymore? Um, so sometimes that's a really good way to help people visualize what happens.
I think one of the things um throughout the gift and I have been talking about is um how we come back to like the first order of of twenty twenty five with some of these decision plans with the specific city moving the general fund. Um, as we move in and playing by utilizing um fund balance, the balance the budget to general fund. Um, there's going to be decisions that are made by council that affect service levels and you also need to understand what's what's mandated, what statute requires, what's discretionary, like what has dedicated funding sources. When we start weighing, right, the importance of these um, something serves. And yes, there's not funding, specific dedicated funding for transportation purposes, how we weigh that with the other uh, means and then the general fund. So absolutely, and that demonstrates the. How we're spending those funds up the services.
Right.
And then we definitely need to provide maintenance for for or roads regardless of a TBD or not. So if we were not to do it or or to fail, then we'd be using general fund money, which is of police officers and and the other public safety dollars we'd be using for roads. Because you have to grade roads and you have to.
We have a liability. Yeah, our streets, our streets and sidewalks um are a liability for us. Our insurance authority certainly would take a different look at at the city of Sheldon's coverage um without it, robust maintenance.
Any other questions? I just wanted to share my gratitude with this council for our being nonpartisan and doing the best for what's good for Shelton and for thinking about um, everyone and that uh most of our decisions have been unanimous or nearly unanimous. So thank you very much to be, I'm so proud to be part of this council and that we think about our constituents first rather than our own personal interests. Thank you very much.
Just to wrap this up, um, we'll we'll find some more information on car tax versus sales tax for information purposes. Uh, sounds like, you know, there's consensus in in at least seeing this. It's just necessarily a decision point for the date um that we that we need to bring more information. So uh, let me do a little more research on on the ballot dates specifically in August and in the timeframe. I'll I'll try to put that together uh for councils um review of that, that we can make a decision on what might be the most. Absolutely, we'll go more explain certainly of uh, and then I guess what the what the levy rate may be as well. Yes, I guess I didn't hear. Um, I didn't hear broad support maybe for the three tenths that I heard from a couple, but um, I guess I'd like to have more feedback before we forward it that's.
I mean, I'd be okay with it, but I like his idea. I like, let's get it back to two tenths and then put it back on the ballot a year later for for another one tenth. Because basically, we we're still doing the minimum stuff that we can do with what we've got.
But you don't want to push it.
Right, but I mean, we're we're still, I mean, with the two tenths, we're still doing the limited stuff that we got. I mean, at three tenths, I mean, that's a whole new ballgame for us.
Right.
Jay would probably eyeballs with glow.
We don't want to risk what we have or a chance of a fifty percent more at this point, right?
So we can certainly demonstrate what that would fund, right?
Yeah.
We have, we have a T I P, we have our six year T I P, we um, we're going to have our ADA transition map, we have our people, we have our payment condition index. Uh, there's not a lack of projects or to me, I think, I think the internal resources might be the the pinch point, you know, is having enough staff to run those projects at that point. That's that's that would be my concern, but that's that's the great problem that.
Yeah, yeah. So the uh the one additional uh point one percent, probably not a project less, and we go do very specific things around the community that we wouldn't otherwise get to, my recommendation.
I would aspire to that, but I don't know. Um, everyone's hurting right now. So I I hear what George always talks about. Man, people are hurting. That's right. People are hurting out there. So um but if we really want to grow, we have to think about, you know, maybe we got to tighten a little more if we want to grow a little more in the future too. That's all I got to ask. If we could have um, maybe options about how we can get to that point three percent, what they and what they could do, and if those are um, a return on investment that the everyone wants to make, then I think that's um a reasonable way to go about it.
Anything else? Do we have any other discussion? No. All right. The study session is adjourned at six forty two P M.